All right, we're just going, okay. Just making sure we're getting up on YouTube. There we go, okay. All right.
I guess they're trying to figure out what the problem is.
Can you hear us getting that? They got it now?
I know.
No.
And they put her, she put her picture up there. I'm saying the rest of them are all moving.
So, we're gonna start the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Let me know if you hear an echo, just because I am on two, two computers.
I don't know what that is, but otherwise not.
Okay, can, I'm just gonna ask everybody, I'm gonna.
Whoever's running this show, right.
Okay. Okay. I apologize, I'm just gonna. There we go. All right. So, we're gonna kick the meeting off. I'm gonna start sharing. So, pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10, 4-10, notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Esberry Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, on Cablevision, Channel 118, and on BIOS Channel 24, and by filing such notice with Township Book. The meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, May 12, 2020. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mayor, please.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, please.
Burns.
Here.
Callie.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Prima.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Vannell.
Here.
Lent.
Here.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Warren exists, so I just wanna make note, Dave is here, Dr. Hawke is here, I'm here. Mr. Toey, are you here?
He is here.
And, Ms. Keeler, are you here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you, and I know Chris Parton is here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you, everyone. I'm glad we got everybody on, we have an audio fix, which is good, so I would ask everyone to please stand for pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands.
One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, for attending. So, we'll just start, we'll, the agenda, for those if you do need it, it is available online at our website. I was gonna put it up. We will unfortunately have a memorial in our code of ethics. Is there anyone who'd like to do that next week?
I'll do it.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Our district goals. We will have approval of the minutes. We will have a recognition for our Teachers of the Year. And then superintendent's report. Mr. Senator, do you have anything for this week, or?
Yes, I do have a few updates, and thank you. We are now in, on Tuesday of our week in which we celebrate special education across the nation, and of course, right here in our community of Old Bridge. I want to thank all of our special education families for the tremendous efforts that they're putting forward in dealing with this remote education as we finish out the school year. Thank our amazing staff, from our teachers, our power professionals, and our leadership team, who's done an incredible job transitioning to this remote education platform and using the services that we do have available to attempt to meet the needs of all of our students. Since we have last met, Executive Order 107 was extended by the Governor of New Jersey, and in that, we closed out the buildings for the rest of the school year, meaning that we remain on remote education to finish out the 1920 school year. The Executive Order 107 was also extended to limit any ceremonies that a school district could have in celebration, graduation ceremonies, moving up ceremonies, any inside ceremonies cannot exceed 110 people. So, we have to, again, be creative as we can in putting together something that recognizes our students, but the state is recommending that we do so virtually. That also, with that closing of the school for the remaining year, and this executive order at least brings us to June 7th, it forces us to create a plan for extended school year, in which we'd have to plan for a remote year, a remote extended school year. Obviously, that is not something we want to do, but we have to plan that way, because there is no indication if that school is closed until June 30th, that on July 1st, something magical is gonna happen, and wish we can have our students and our staff in personal engagements for education. If there is something that's amended to that, we will have something hybrid in place, and everything else we've done with this, with this, is to have plans A, B, and C, because, as I've said to my staff and my superintendents around the county, it's very difficult to build a plane and fly at the same time. It's even more difficult to build a plane while someone else is flying it. And that's what we're, we're dealing with here, as we come up with suggestions, ideas, and ways to address some of our concerns, we are then told what ways in which we can follow through on those plans. So, we have to have plans in place for everything. Right now, we're gonna have to plan for an extended school year in a remote setting. As far as 2021, again, we have think tanks of educators and educational leaders out there, and working with county officials and state officials, to try to put together a plan of what schools will look like, not only in the nation, New Jersey, but right here in Old Bridge for 2021. We have these teams looking at potential concerns that would be experienced in 2021, and how, and coming up with solutions on how to address concerns, multiple solutions. Like I said, we have to have plans A, B, and C, and from there, we'll put together teams that will create a framework or a blueprint of how to address those concerns in 2021. So, those are my big announcements for the course of this update, and I'm sure I'll keep on providing updates to the, to the public and to our school district, the Board, on a weekly basis, because everything kind of changed in education on a daily basis. I want to thank everyone who took part in the enjoyment and the revelry of having our district flyover with the banner for students, and especially the class of 2020, which we are really working hard to recognize their efforts, and the, this celebration that needs to be had for their accomplishments. So, everyone, I'm grateful for the Board's support on this endeavor, and glad we can all take part of it as a community, and come together as a community like we always do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Senator Dino. Now, we are going to, well, we'll go through the rest. Sorry. Mr. Mayor, do we have any correspondence?
No correspondence.
We have no special committee reports, I don't believe. We have our facility use in our packets, and so now, we will open the hearing to the residents on any agenda item only at this point, and as we did last week, I would ask if you have any comments, if you could please put them in the chat. So, I'm, wait a second, because I know it can take a few minutes if you're typing something in, so we'll just hold for a second. All right, I don't see anything coming in for public comment at this time. So, we'll close the public comment portion right now, and we'll move on to our Board items. The first thing we have is for policy. So, Mr. Parton, did you wanna, this is our first reading for policies, do you wanna give an explanation?
Yeah, would you like me to go through very quickly?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
Yeah. We have Policy Alert 219, it has a handful of policies, the majority of them are mandated. There are a couple that have been updated based upon changes in state law, based upon Strauss Esme catching up to regulations which have been revised, in many cases, simply in terms of language. There are a couple of them, notably, the, the very first one on the list, which is Bylaw 0152 about Board Officers. As you will recall, we've been through that a couple times in the last several years, and your bylaw already contains the changes that Strauss Esme is now recommending. Other things, such as postnatal accommodations, administration medication, you are already current with, but these regulations or end policies are not only catching up to state regulations, but catching up to Old Bridge, which puts you in a great position, that does not require changes in your practices. There is really no enormous change in any of these policies. I did provide a memo to the Policy Committee and the administrators who are involved with that. Ms. Ellis Foster, at your discretion, if you wanna have that through Joe's office, go to all Board members before next Tuesday's meeting, we could certainly do that, because it is a more lengthy, which you don't need right now, but it is more comprehensive analysis of the 10 policies and eight regulations at issue.
Okay, you know, I think if you could do that, that'd be work, that would work well.
Joanne, can you do that?
I can do that, Chris.
Great. That's it.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments on the policy? You know, I know we did get the policies in our packet, so if anybody wants to, and they need them, and to pick them up, they're available at the Board Office also. All right, next is curriculum professional development. Items one through.
Kelly, just one thing, if somebody wants to come to the office to pick up the package of policies, just let us know a little bit in advance before you're coming, so we'll have the policies ready for you, if you want hard copies.
They're all ready, I make enough for everybody to come pick them up, they're in the lobby.
Okay, great, thanks, Joanne. So, if those are available, if anybody wants to pick them up. So, any questions on curriculum professional development, one through nine? No? Okay. Next is athletics. There's only, there's one item right now. Any questions? Comments?
I just wanna just confirm, so, so back up to the, what is it? Curriculum professional development item, you know, with the CPR training, AED recertification, that will be, I, again, contingent upon whether, I hate to even say it, whether the doors are open in September, I imagine, or? Am I, am I misreading it?
You are correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay. Anything else? Anything on athletics? Okay, the next, we do have an item, two items on finance, so can I have a motion for finance, to move finance?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Okay, so, Mr. Giordano, and then Ms. Kelly, second.
And if we could separate number two for discussion? Okay.
Giordano was the first?
First, yep.
Giordano, Kelly.
Okay, so, you know, Ms. Kelly, do you wanna talk about number two?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to give a little background. I know that most of you know that Mrs. DeCaro and I are also on the Project Graduation Committee, and the committee sort of met via text, not even like Zoom, but with the state canceling graduation ceremonies and the continued restrictions on the number of attendees at events, and the committee's concern for the health and safety of graduates and the volunteers, not to mention the fact that this year, we could not raise funds, as we have in the past, by asking local businesses to donate, when they were already losing so much during the pandemic, it became apparent that we can't have Project Graduation this year. Next year, we, we would be faced with the same difficulties. It would be, again, be very difficult to ask local businesses to donate while they're still recovering from the losses of this year. Because of this, and also due to the declining numbers of attendees we see year after year, the committee has decided to discontinue Project Graduation. The class of 2020 has lost so much this year, that the committee voted to use the balance in the Project Graduation Fund to award scholarships to the graduating seniors of the class of 2020. That's why this is on for action today. The funds in the Project Graduation account will be moved to the Student Activities account that is used for scholarships, and scholarships will be awarded by the Scholarship Committee, not by the Project Graduation Committee. As a Board member, I'd like to thank all the volunteers, past and present, I think Project Graduation has been going on for probably 20 years, I think. I was told today that Joan Bonk and Gail Kabicki and Sue Kaplan were actually the originators of this. I know Jill DeCaro and I have been on the committee for the last seven, eight, I don't know, 10 years. More. But as a, as a Board member, I wanna thank all the committee members, past and present, for all their hard work, and as a committee member, and I'm sure I speak for Mrs. DeCaro as well, it was a very difficult decision for everybody, but one that unfortunately, because of the current climate, as much as I hate using that term, we were forced into. So, that is why you're voting on number two today.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kelly, and it's, it's, it is a hard thing to let go, but it's nice that the money then also can be used for the student scholarships. So, thank you. Any other questions on one or two? All right, so, Mr. Mayor, roll call, please.
Giordano.
Yes.
Lent.
Yes.
Solakowski.
Yes.
Burns.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Carol.
Yes.
Prima.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Resolution, resolution one and two.
All right, thank you. Now, we have three, also numbers three through 11 next week. One thing I just noticed, I wonder if we want to remove number five?
Yeah.
Next week, because we were notified by the New Jersey School Boards that they are not holding their convention in Atlantic City in October. I know a note went out, and they're, they're gonna have some virtual workshop, so I guess we'll learn a little bit more about what those will be, but.
Good.
We don't have that. All right. Any other comments on any of the other finance items? Move on to non-certificated personnel office, one through three. Any questions, comments? Okay. Let's see, just wanna. Okay.
Did you just said everyone mute themselves?
Yeah.
And then only, un-h mute yourself when you're speaking.
Yep. Okay, next is non-certificated personnel operational, one through three. Any questions, comments? Moving on to non-certificated personnel other, one through six. Any questions? Comments?
Are we gonna have the blanks? There's a couple of blanks, and I'm sorry, I'm going, there's one under your non-certificated personnel other, and one under operational.
And there's also a blank on retirement.
We don't have any, we don't have any right now, but we always leave that open until the regular meeting, and the other blanks, I would expect that we would have filled.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Certificated personnel other. Again, I'm gonna assume, if there's fill-ins, we'll see those, numbers one through 19. Any questions, comments?
We definitely, we, I'm sorry, I just lost my page. We definitely will have names under number three for new hires, new positions, I'm sorry, new hires replacing retirements that we've already had on agendas, and the leaves of absence, we could always have additional ones there.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? Non-certificated personnel transportation, one through four. Any questions, comments, concerns? Next, supplies, equipment, and services, one through five. Any questions? Comments? Next, transportation. One through five. Nope, transportation is one through 10, sorry, one through 10. Questions, concerns, comments? Next, miscellaneous. One through five. At this point, we'll make the call on where the meetings are housed. We know, depending on what orders are in place, we'll either continue to do on Zoom or see if there's any other adjustments if we can make. So, we'll update that as the time gets closer. Anything else on miscellaneous questions? Okay. And then we have action items under Board Business, items number one and two, if I could have a motion, please?
Don't make a motion, Madam President.
Thank you. So, I'll first just talk, I'll open comments. Okay, I'll first talk on the first one. You know, we know that everyone is having economic crisis now, along with this, including municipalities, however, there was some, is some legislation pending that would allow municipalities to delay their payments of the tax portion for the school districts, and we have great concern over that, because we still need to make all of our payments. So, I would like to personally thank Mr. Lewis and Mr. O'Neil, and the OBEA, who helped get up a petition online, if people can do that. I know today that New Jersey Senate was looking at with amendments. We've reached out to our local Assemblyman and Senator, Mr. Thompson, and Clifton, and Dancer, Assemblyman Dancer did get back to me today, as well, he did contact Ms. Kelly, which was a good little prod, that they're opposing it, but they haven't seen everything, and it depends on what the amendments say. So, this is where the Board as a whole can, you know, express their concern about, not only are we already whammied by our reduction in state aid, now there's, you know, maybe holding some of our funds, so it's just something we can't, can't deal with right now, so that's what that resolution is. And then the second one, Mr. Mayor, do you wanna give a brief explanation of what this one is, because it is also all part of the same issues we have because of the economic crisis?
Yes, sure, no problem. So, under the federal CARES legislation, which was, which was continued even further under state legislation, the district is required to make payments to certain contractors that we deal with, subject to negotiations with them to confirm that they are eligible to receive payments, and one of the specific, one of the services that's been difficult to deal with is the transportation contractors that we deal with, we deal with six or seven of them, and under the regulations, we, we've been trying to negotiate with them individually to see how we can make payment. However, it was decided amongst 25 or 30 different districts, that the BAs would establish a committee to negotiate with all of the bus companies, because we all deal with them, and come up with one, one plan that all districts will agree to after the renegotiations. And now, as part of that negotiations, if we do pay them, the transportation companies will have to provide us with documentation that they've been paying their employees during this shutdown, that they do not have business interruption insurance, and that their employees are not collecting unemployment. So, to the extent that that happens, the negotiations are ongoing by this committee of five BAs with, you know, maybe 50 transportation companies to try to settle this. It may take another 30 days or so, but it's, the negotiations are ongoing as we speak.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, anybody have any questions or comments on these two?
So, Joe, I'm sorry, so Joe, basically what you're saying, the CARES Act is basically us throwing a lifeline at the transportation via taxpayers' money.
On, I wouldn't say it that way, Mr. Dunn, what I would say is that the CARES Act has directed us to pay contractors, subject to them doing certain things. It's not a lifeline, but if they're paying their employees, then it's clear that we should, we should pay them. Now, when we, you have a transportation contract, transportation contract, it pays for not just the salaries of people, it pays for their benefits, it pays for fuel, it pays for maintenance, pays for facilities usage, pays for a bunch of things. So, we, we're not going to pay them for, for anything other than reimbursing them for their wages, or reimbursing them for the contractual daily amount modified by whatever the percentage is which we agreed to is equal to the wages. So, but again, they have to have, continue to pay their employees in order to be eligible to receive funding from the district.
Got it, and they have to give us the, the necessary backup to prove that they've been paying correctly.
Yeah, some examples, so they will have to provide us, first of all, they have to also tell us that they haven't, they haven't applied for payroll protection program, they also have to provide us with a payroll journal from February 15th, and they have to provide us with payroll journals from March 15th and April 15th, to show us that they continue to pay their employees, which would make them eligible to receive something from us. which would make them eligible to receive something from us.
Got it. So we're not subsidizing the complete contract, it's just a portion that's going to cover their employee salaries. Right. The key is, if I can interject, is to make sure this is not a financial windfall for the owners of these contracted companies. So they're holding on to the money we give them and still not paying their employees and then collecting insurance on the back end.
Yeah, and that's where the documentation requirement comes in, Mr. Dunn. It's, this is make whole legislation. This is not supposed to be a windfall for anybody. But the theory is that you're already budgeted for it. So to the extent they're actually out and they can prove it, you make them whole with money that was already budgeted for that purpose.
Understand.
Can I ask a question? So if they did apply for the PPP and they did receive it, then are we, we don't have to pay them then, right? We're out of.
That would be double dipping. They would not be eligible.
Okay.
Okay, and anything else on the transportation?
No, I just want to say, you know, regarding the resolution, you know, wholeheartedly, you know, I just can't even believe that, that we are still in a position where we have to fight for what is, is ours. We're not fighting for anything more. You know, we need to pay people. And I still can't believe that we are still in a situation that we are, you know, having to fight and, and fight for what we deserve. So I don't understand why this resolution came about. I mean, I guess I do from, you know, for the municipal, for the municipalities, you know, to ease their burden. But by easing their burden, they're putting a burden on us. So I really don't understand who thought this was a good idea. But, you know, I'm glad that we have this resolution on the table tonight.
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, that is, the, it's not really petition, it's letters. And there's, there's links on websites. I know the, the OBEA has it on their Facebook page. I know several of us also shared it. And what we'll do is we'll link you to your, when you put in your area code, your actual legislators, and we'll send the letters to them. So for where you come in. So if you either go out and look out there for it, you know, please, you can still, you know, do those. So it's not a petition, they're letters that will go to the individual legislators. I know when I did mine, it included Governor Murphy, and I, I got the automated response back. So, you know, they're getting them. So again, thanks to OBEA for helping set that up.
I have a question for Chris Parton regarding legislation regarding the tax payments to the Board of Educations. Now, obviously, if the Assembly and Senate approve it, that has to be initiated by our township. So theoretically, if it's approved by the state legislature, it doesn't mean that our township is going to enact that and take our monies or hold our monies back. So we do have the option, and correct me, Chris, to go after our council and our mayor to make it known that we don't appreciate what they're doing and that they should, you know, second, you know, give it second thought. Is that a correct statement?
That is. The process, you know, it's going to go through both houses of the legislature. It would have to go across the governor's desk. And then at that point, it is permissive legislation, which means the township would have the ability to pay a percentage rather than 100 cents on the dollar, which is interesting because it's your money. It's money's raised for school purposes. It is not township money that they are giving to you. It is school district money that they are collecting on your behalf. So yes, to your point, there could then be a discussion at the local level. And every town could come up with a different percentage. That percentage might be 100%. That would be a very good percent. And that's the kind of discussion that would have to happen if this legislation is passed, because it doesn't require them to cut you. And the authority to, and then you'd have the discussions.
Perfect.
Do we have a link on the district website that they can, you know, for people that aren't on Facebook or on our Facebook pages to, to get to the petition? Anybody?
Not that I know of at this time. I haven't even seen the link yet. So if we could, we could start sharing it as soon as I have it.
Okay, I can, I can send that to you right after the meeting. Thank you. All right, any other discussion on these two resolutions? Great, thank you. Roll call, Mr. Mayor, please.
Filikowski?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Callie?
Yes.
DeCaro?
Yes.
DePrima?
Yes.
Dunn?
Yes.
Giordano?
Abstain.
Abstain?
Yes.
Lent?
Yes.
Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Thank you. All right, now we will go back to hearing of the residents on any district item that they have. And as we've done in previous meetings, if you can just put any of your comments in Zoom, we'll read them out. So I'm going to just give a few minutes. Okay, so there's a question from Mr. O'Neill. When we attend the agenda meeting in person, we have access to hard copies of the draft agenda for the upcoming regular meeting. Since it's not possible, can be made on the, can the draft be made on the website? It is, actually. That's what I'm sharing right now is the one from the website is on your website right now. We do post it at the very beginning of the meeting. So I apologize if I did not clearly state that at the beginning of the meeting.
Kelly, we posted, I believe, at 7:00.
Right, at 7? Oh, at 7, okay. Yeah, that's, so if, I don't know if you can see that. That's where I'm sharing it from right now, is the one that's on the website. So it is there. And it will be available from 7 to 10. Okay, great. Thank you, Joanne. Okay. I'll wait another minute, see if anybody else is putting anything out. Just pause a second. All right. I don't see anything else coming in through the chat. So I will, I'll close the public portion then at this time. And move on to old business. Anybody have any old business?
Yes, Kelly. So last week at the public hearing, the question was asked what the ratable increase was in the prior budget year. And it was $13,313,183.
Just repeat that again, a little slower.
I'm sorry. So at the budget hearing, a question came from the public asking what the ratable increase was in the prior budget year.
Right.
And I made the comment that over the last four or five years, the ratables have gone up significantly. That, that question related to the last budget year, the increase was $13,313,183 increase in the ratable.
Okay, thank you. The only other, the one piece of old business I have is tomorrow, the board members should get the notification that we can go in. Those non-conflicted board members can go in and start Mr. Setadino's evaluation. Everybody will get it, but only the non-conflicted members should go in and do that. Right now, our deadline is 5:20, but I think we can extend that a little bit because we gave a buffer. So if we can have it done by right before Memorial Day, that'd be great. So you'll get that email coming. Any other old business? Any new business?
I just wanted, I think everybody, all board members got an email that there's a president's council meeting tomorrow, if anybody wants to join. Again, it's a Zoom meeting, so.
All right. Okay. And anybody else? I do not believe, do we have a executive session today?
We do. Sorry.
So I don't have anything. I also, I do want to thank Mr. Setadino for the flyover. I think it was, it was certainly unique, which was, is what Old Bridge is. So it was a nice, a nice thing to have. It was a beautiful day. So I think a nice way to honor all of our students, especially in 2020. So thank you for that. And the other thing is, I think this week is Special Education Week. So shout out to our SEPTA. I know I've seen them posting some stuff out there and all the great work that they do for our kids. So just a quick recognition for them. And if there's nothing else, can we have a motion to go into an executive session, Mr. Parton?
Yes, you would need a motion for exec session for personnel pertaining to a non-bargaining unit employee and for a property lease issue.
Okay, and we will not be coming back? Okay, so can I have a motion?
I'll move it. I'll second.
Ms. Callie?
Callie and DeCaro?
DeCaro, yes. All right, thank you, everyone from the public. Thank you for attending, and everyone, please stay safe and healthy.
Bye.
Kelly, we just, so all in favor?
I.
Opposed? Extentions? The executive session at 8:00.